...management and the administration. The monthly meetings of the board are open to public. They are, they are timed, this is the time when the board conducts its business of governing the school system in the public arena. The regular meeting-
If I am talking while others are speaking, if that proceeding to be accurately recorded, I may ask for order periodically should noise begin to interfere with our recording because you have taken the time this evening to join us. We are very proud of the school system and thank you for your interest in Hartford Public Schools. As you note, the board meetings are back to meeting in person. As in public comment per Connecticut Executive Order, the following phase two mandates, indoor meetings must not exceed twenty-five total individuals. In order to allow all those to- ...in and out of the meeting, as to not exceed the twenty-five total individuals. Masks and physical distancing are required and will be enforced. Reminder that we are streaming the meeting live for-
Well, President, the president of the Harvard School of Education, I am here to present a testimony coordinatory to the junta, the eighteenth of August, of two thousand and twenty. The morning of the day, the members present and our televisions, the junta and the members- ...of the administration and to make decisions regarding the functioning of the objectives of the schools of the university. This is a testimony coordinatory and all those adjutant who have been- ...this afternoon, have been notified how it is the law that is at hand. Como junta of the administration of the Harvard, we are here for this opportunity to listen to the information of the superintendent, approve the pre-requests, contracts, and arrangements of personnel. And this is a record for our institution. We are not here for any decisions administrative or to reveal problems individuals. The administration is the responsibility of the superintendent to take. The reunions in the halls of the junta are open to the public. It is a moment in which the junta is here to accomplish the task of governing the school system in the public. The reunions regularly are not reunions for the students. For the matter, the comments of the audience, they cannot have a hundred and fifty minutes of focus directed at the junta. The decor and the- ...and the fact that we are here to talk about what we are talking about, yes, it is the legal requirement that the proceedings be allowed to be taken. It is possible that we will have to give orders periodically if the room interferes with our capabilities of- ...the administration. We would like that you have had the time this afternoon to come and visit Harvard. We are very proud of this school system and we thank you for your interest in the schools of the university.
Student members and members of the board, students. I am here as co-president of the Harvard Federation of Parent Educators and as the leaders in this meeting. The issue, the only real issue, is the safety of all. Students, staff, the teachers, the parent educators, students, and above all, the elders. Granted, that the students are likely to meet on a daily basis. We have seen schools open in Georgia and closed within days. The University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill just opened and closed. Closer to home, UConn opened and closed because the COVID-19 virus cannot be contained in a school environment. The CVC rules for school openings have, of course, been loosened following political pressure. Everyone in this room knows that. So the guidelines on here may not be what we need at the doors of our schools. You are not provided flexi glass for our secretaries. We are not even sure about the guidelines from the- ...Hartford or inferior to those in the suburbs to begin with. And we are in no position to render them safe for attendance during the day of dinner. Students are in the classroom for six to eight hours a day. Fine, you have to- You cannot access, we get those rooms to make them safe and- ...in our schools. Some will be sick and we see enough, some may even die. Our school community, teachers, parent educators, staff, the students, and we are now learning how to- ...them that- It comes down to this. If each of you really believes in your- ...that. And should not, in good practice, open- ...what is right for our students, our staff, and our community. Do we speak to what is right? Our students, staff are counting on you. All together. Margaret Harper.
...to the board of the Harvard, my name is Robert Harper. On the only unit that can have, have a, like, city that has been hiring a lot of other schools, permanent employees of the- ...for a month, they didn't even, I appreciate it, but I don't know, they didn't know it. They didn't provide-
...the first thing that comes to mind is this verse from the Bible, nineteen fourteen. God said, let the children come to me and do not endure for the kingdom of heaven to such a deed. It says how much God loves the children and how His love will lead them to right. But through the years, through the years, God has been taking up the school, prayed, and out of the community, out of the community is so long, it has called us, we've done many struggles. Grandkids had a child in Harvard, going to school with a baby. I didn't have to worry about many things, the children have to worry about that. It was a safer environment. At the time, the family was destroyed. We had many people. Now, through the whole community, the community people, the Harvard has been much defeated. This is a contribution to the community of the property issues based for Harvard's community. I dislike the fact that we're unfortunate with the rumors that continue to say more and less. Because of the increased virus and pushers, we have called the authorities to let us know how dangerous this school climate is. And I'm speaking of employees. A kind of that for many of the children, anxiety, PTSD, and social miscommunication. Working with this, though, it's hard to believe that the kids are in the middle of a disaster, as soon as they have the cold red. It was a very traumatic for the children. Now, COVID has seen the deal. We are down between the, the least of the two evils. Governor asked that the children have to go back and then need to be at school, but what else? My friend does this. He is a student. At that point, he said, we want to go back, but we shouldn't have to treat our mental health and our physical health. What if the mothers, we have time to convey to your generation. Moreover, are we accepting the negative of the past? ...and I can't refuse. We need to safely reopen our schools and guarantee the resources we need to work. Our bodies face how we believe will be remembered. Our care and service of our schools, the ones that we- ...at the worst time. Thank you for your time.
I am speaking to you today in hopes you will make the safest choice when it comes to the reopening of Hartford Public Schools, which is our- ...job, but the real life details just are not being considered. And in truth, even if they were, the situation is just unattainable. Hartford Public Schools is unique in its size and has specifically- ...including its geographical constraint. If a student or teacher tests positive for COVID-19, the Connecticut plan says the entire classroom hours, possibly fourteen days. A contact tracing team assesses every- ...day. It's been policing masks and safety moderate. What happens if students lose- ...and why can't educators? May I remind you that we are not medical personnel outfitted with ample- ...that our students be medical grade cautious or learn in such an environment is unrealistic. Let's be real, schools are different. First, our business is kids. The very nature of this work involves putting adults together in close spaces. Kids who touch things, who cry, who need to be silly with their friends, who need to move, who need support, guidance, love, attention, sitting apart, wearing masks, staying in one room all day, facing disruptions in their learning, and possibly a rotation of teachers, all with the expect, all with the expectation to be self-directed under conditions and comply with all regulations, is not the reality of children and adolescents. I know that Hartford faces tremendous challenges, that our schools also feed, support, and shelter all considerations. There are ways to financially support families, protect housing, provide food, and sustain learning at home. Educators should be spending time on learning how to improve and sustain distance learning. You are born to better, the only ones left to have the power to get us through this pandemic with intelligent thinking if that relies on science and common sense. Don't send us back only not to be able to meet our students. New plans when it comes to the opening of the 2021 school year with distance learning. For example, we can open with distance learning and always reassess in January as New Haven. With the many plans that have been given to the board for the reopening of Hartford Schools with distance learning, we are beginning to think all these new plans have not been- Lastly, I will leave you with this address for opening his building with distance learning for the start of the year. And I quote, "In the end, it will be impossible to know if we overreacted or did too much, but it will be quite apparent to the district that underreacted or did too little." Let me remind you that the underreaction could be the loss of lives. Do not let Hartford Public Schools open with this plan and regret that it did too little to protect our students. Just today, there's been a three hundred and seventy new cases in Hartford. Thank you.
Thank you, Harvard.
Good evening, members of the board of the Hartford Public Schools. I am the chairman, president of the Hartford- I compliment you on questions regarding the reopening of schools eight days from today. I direct these questions to you, the elected or appointed Board of Education members who represent Hartford residents in the delivery of public education in our city. Are we ready? Are we ready to reopen schools in a manner that guarantees safety to all staff and families within those buildings? Tonight, you restricted your twenty-five people following safety protocol. Yet in eight days, all schools are slated to open with twice or more that number, and two weeks later, students return, putting every building above a one- ...limit our state currently holds. The HFP totally supports the needs of students to return to learn safely. We worked with the superintendent's task force on the reopening plan, yet are not satisfied that the person's hybrid and fully remote learning effectively and with quality instruction has been fully achieved. Safe place for all our children. To that end, will the board- ...all in-person classes to the twelve to sixteen student capacity that appears to maintain a safe social distance of six- The safe school training requires- Yet by this agreement, allows for three feet if this speed is not possible. Are you pumped at- ...having some schools that- ...some of the six feet apart rule for in-person learning, while other schools are planning to classify it that only allows three feet apart distance? Will you stand for this? If in-person classes larger than six feet apart can accommodate the four- ...house or with some of the safety guidelines, that I would stand maybe to learn about? For example, two of the training students talk to the national staff about six feet away from others. So if we know the distance is six feet, why are churches allowing less than six feet ever? Like, we're forced to be- ...possible, can't we? The safe school training videos do not say that less than six feet is okay if only you are wearing masks. In fact, one video says that the top safe part is not supposed to- One of the lessons of the assessment act, how much space is needed between people who are wearing masks? Apparently, enough is three feet. And of course, I get a question. Is six feet with masks, which is not a standard rule? If we cannot maintain in every classroom and on every school block at all times, then we have an unsafe number of people present. If we hope to move to the hybrid model to lower the numbers to maintain safe social distancing, then that has to be done. Or better yet, keep us one hundred percent safe and start a new removal for everyone. I have another concern related to PPE. According to one of the animated videos, OSHA states that PPE cannot be DNA. It must meet CFA standards and it must be- Is our district's planning to follow the OSHA regulations? ...here? I wouldn't even know about this, unless I launched a safe school campaign. Safety has to be a priority, not to be non-adherent. One life lost is two minutes. Please keep a safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Ready to stand?
Ladies and gentlemen.
I got bad news, it takes a long time, but it's leaving partners, not leaving, hello. Clean, safe, healthy. Clean, safe, healthy. This, as a former head custodian and a parent in the city of Hartford, the former president of the union, clean, safe, healthy, reigns supreme in buildings and grounds before Claudio Desire, when it was Dr. Alhams, when we actually had trainings for our custodians. Imagine that. Imagine that. So CDC says for us to disinfect any area, it has to be clean, free of dust and debris. Have we been in some of these neighborhood schools? They're not free of dust and debris, so it cannot, it cannot be disinfected. When you go into a classroom and there's carpeting on the floor, you can never disinfect this carpeting, ever. The owner, OSHA says, if there's carpeting in this building, you should be able to roll it out and put it in the wash. No carpeting should be in school classrooms. You can never disinfect that carpet. Now, when we talk about clean, safe, healthy, the ventilation system, oh, the nastiest. Are we really going to put kids in to those situations in, in, in some of these neighborhood schools? Are these, these ventilation systems getting changed every thirty days? Under normal circumstances, it's every thirty days. This is far from normal. We've never once have ever been a part of something like this. How clean are these ventilation systems? I can start talking about CNS, I can talk about, I don't know, where Buffalo is going at the old boy, um, I could talk about burns, we could talk about families that are not working at all, at all. When is Claudio, when I was union president, we had HCM one, the swine flu, I made protests and I made a big stink about it with buildings and grounds with the whole superintendent. We did nothing. The only trainings that custodians used to get, yeah, we gotta do our asbestos every year because that's mandated, but all the other trainings is because the president of the union kept pushing it. That was the only reason how those, those, those trainings were going on. When are we gonna hire a third shift? If we're gonna have kids in this school, when are we gonna hire a third shift custodians? Not take the custodians that are currently here, and I don't care what Giselle says, because Giselle was not the one who was doing it, it's ours. And what, what are we gonna do about that? Not take these, the custodians that were out, that didn't have their third shift. When are we gonna hire more? When is that gonna be employed? What about working time? Why haven't the custodian just sit, sit at work and come home to his mother, his grandma? Where, where is the working time? And, 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 um, I find it hysterical that we have all this social distancing going on, but we don't have kids to be there in school. We don't even want to put Latin barriers up for the secretaries. You know, which is insane. What kind of trainings has buildings and grounds been doing with the guys? Because I know for a fact, and we need to make sure that buildings and grounds is training the guys, you need to have a third shift that specifically comes in and disinfects at night. Charter reform. Talked about this before. We have too many appointed board of ed members. We need charter reform, I want to see every board member elected on a ballot that I come and I vote for. I don't want no more, we're gonna have to keep it. And if you're good, like you said before, you, you'll win, don't even worry about it. But we need charter reform beyond the law. And lastly, in the end, you will remember, you will not remember the words of your enemies, but the silence of your friends. Thank you.
Thank you. Teresa Chan.
Are you here? Okay. Hi, I'm Teresa Chan. I am a teacher at the Bishop's Hospital. In the last seven years that I've been with the Hartford District, this is usually a exciting time of year, but this year, a little bit. The looming start of the school year during the time of COVID-19 has brought to many of my colleagues and I in a state of worrying anxiety for what is best for our students and for ourselves. I recognize completely the difficult position that you all have seen as you are trying to do what's best for the students in the Hartford community, and that teachers represent only one aspect of the partnership for a successful school. However, as you sit here weighing the pros and cons of this decision based on safety level, fractional rate percentages, that will create new levels of legitimacy in the current reopening plan going forward, please consider our progress process as felt like from a teacher's standpoint. However, it feels like to know that a family we serve gets to have essentially the no questions asked approach when deciding what's best for them, whereas we teachers have to divulge embarrassingly personal health information about us and our loved ones to potentially dispare the anxiety of the equipment versus the situation. How is this gesture, a gesture of respect for individual and teaching profession and also for greater connection and standing? How is it fair that my colleagues at my level literally did a debate this week about who is sicker and who at risk to determine how we will design our order this year, which is, which is to determine who gets to stay home and who gets to be in school? The teachers' forum, that ought to be, like, that ought to be a reason for teachers to take one for the team, but it feels that way with our policies that we're supporting this mindset. I know that many of our students are excited to return to school, but I worry that we are not offering enough transparency of how different this experience will be for them and their families. I worry about the extent that this school experience will be altered clearly beyond the mask wearing- clearly beyond the mask wearing experience and how it may not provide the same benefits that parents may be thinking it will come out. I think that at the very minimum, parents deserve to know not only what new safety parameters are being implemented, but the drastic ways in which their child's experience of a school day will be changed. If in this school experience, if the in-school experience is actually safe enough, then why is it that majority of our colleagues right now who have children in my school that elected to keep their own children at home? Why is it there are at least one person right now on this board of ed who has also chosen to keep their child at home instead of learning in the building of a Hartford public school? If CDC regulations stipulate that only 25 people can be in this meeting, like, how do we can make teachers feel when we are looking forward to a full reopening within the first week to welcome any of the school community of people that are watching? And beyond looking at inflection rates, like, have you guys considered the behavioral psychology group dynamics of our students from this decision resuming? And then within specifically monitor grade schools, we also have a set of unique challenges that come with our hands-on learning approach and multi-age classrooms. We need to find a way to interact teachers, especially those working with our youngest children when they need to work in postpartum age of child. We need, even at the youngest levels of classrooms, where all children are wearing masks, not only the oldest, physical contact, inevitable contact with body fluids, they all need to be accounted for. And it is imperative that the schools support the negative our, our dietary materials. And we do need to consider like the special cleaning protocols and supplies that will need to be, you know, support, you know, provided for that. My colleagues and I are struggling, humbling towards this year and trying to prepare for both in-person and online options. Hundreds of dollars of running costs in the funds have already been spent on teaching supplies to prepare for this year because the budget hasn't frozen, as I've been told. And other random things we need to even begin to need to easy diagnostics. And of course, there are many, many questions of both academic and legal nature that would best be answered as we go in, as we go into this school year. How is this the best program offered for our families? How are we addressing the tool or mental health of this experience is doing to the Hartford teaching community? For effective instruction, our students deserve to have mentorship and emotionally present teachers who don't have to wait all morning whether we should put their own families at risk or be in service to students. Why are teachers being asked to show compassion to the community if compassion doesn't seem to be being shown to us? When school starts, make a do-go ahead at the full opening. I urge you all to come and spend a full day in my classroom. And maybe I invite you to see more to the high ground. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Ellen.
As you may remember, all my clients have our three minutes, we will be working out at the time and even if we are reaching a bottom, we are going to survive.
My name is Mary Ellen, and I am a Hartford school teacher. At Hartford, one of the reasons I decided to move from the Caribbean after suffering through two category five hurricanes was because I knew the work that I had done there was also needed at Hartford. Often the superintendent gets in front of cameras and she talks about equity and equality in Hartford. But no teacher believes that. Because if that was truly the case, you would not be asking teachers and students to go back to school in person. When you know brown and black people of color have a higher rate of death due to COVID-19. Yes, children need to learn. Yes, it is much better in person than it is online. Yes, I know you've all been put in an impossible situation between a rock and a hard place. And no matter what you decide, no one is going to be happy. I have many family members in education, including a close relative that works on the Board of Education. And I have watched in her state, the decision that they have made. And I have had to come to wonder, why has Connecticut chosen not to do what she and her Board of Education have done? Why is it when Bridgeport and New Haven have the same type of population we have, have the same types of rates of infection we have, 1.8, I believe either the superintendent or the mayor said today on TV? Why are we choosing to go in person when other school districts have chosen to go online? As my colleague before me said, we sat in a meeting today and hashed out who was more likely to need social distancing to teach? Who was less likely to be infected and then die in the classroom? What are the pre-K and kindergarten teachers who have children who have no body control supposed to do when fluids go flying around the classroom? And if you do not believe fluids will go flying around the classroom, you've never been in a kindergarten classroom. How do you justify putting three-year-olds on the floor and telling first and second and third graders they cannot be on the floor? You all look at me, and I'm sure you will hear many complaints from many people. And I'm sure your decisions on what you decided for the school year will stand. But as I see how you're all social distanced and how you're very controlled about who gets let into this building, I wonder why you think that that is okay for you, but not for the students of Hartford? Thank you.
Thank you. Hiya Cynthia.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Hiya Cynthia. Haven't been here in a while, but I decide I have to come out and speak because it's important. I hope you're all doing well. So I'm here first to talk about, here's this big auditorium. And only 25 people can be in the building. So I want you to look at it, 25 people. And we expect to send all our kids back to school. That's gonna cost more than 25 kids in a classroom, or whatever the case may be. So just look at it, it's controlled to make sure no more than 25 people come in. How do you, as board and superintendent, expect to make it work in our school? The other thing I'd like to know, superintendent, have you made sure that all our school vents are clean? Because I'm gonna tell you something. Hartford has the worst, dirtiest school in the state because our ventilation system has not been cleaned. Okay? So I would like to know whether you have put that money out to make sure all of them are clean before our children went back to school. That's really important. Okay? Because if that doesn't happen, I don't see how you're gonna make sure our children and our teachers are safe. Okay? There's no safety anywhere, it doesn't matter. Okay? But I want to make sure at least they have a fighting chance. Children need to learn. And they can learn online and they can learn in person. Most kids like to learn in person. I'd like to know what the plans are. Did you put a plan out that your teachers could like and embrace? Yeah, of course, no one is perfect. You're never gonna please everyone, that's for sure. But have you even tried to sit down with the whole union and say, hey, I'd like to hear what you have to say? I am a teacher, I am the front, I'm the frontline. I should have some input of what happened. Is that happening? Did it happen? It's important. Okay? Our children matters, our teachers matters. The family they go home to at night matters. So let's look at all of those two things, these three things I talk about, and make sure something is happening. You cannot be in a vacuum and doing everything on your own. But the state, whatever the case may be, look at the frontline people, they have some input. And they may actually sound good, that may work. So please think about those things, okay? And you all have a good day.
Thank you. Black is here. Lauren Powers.
Hello. Well, I know I didn't win the Academy Award because I was in the back. Um, hi, my name is Beth Bisher. And I have been a teacher in Hartford for over 35 years. I am currently at Naylor School. I am here this evening to ask you to please reconsider a full opening of our schools. While Connecticut is doing better than many other states, we have not moved past the phase three reopening. There is a reason for this caution. We have been able to achieve this status only by following the CDC guidelines and protocols by a vast majority of our state. Too many of our schools will not be able to follow the guidelines once our students return to school. There are often small spaces for classrooms that will not allow for social distancing needed. You limited tonight who could come in this very large room. And if we talk about putting kids in a cafeteria or an auditorium or a gym, we will definitely have more than 25. Many students and staff will have a great deal of difficulty wearing a mask for the majority of the day. Just think yourself how long you can wear a mask before you need to take it off. Perhaps you should all come and experience a day in school when you stay in the same room all day and wear a mask for most of the day. I know the superintendent said today that there would be mask breaks every hour, but that is unfathomable about how we're going to take a mask off and then spread germs. And if we're all gonna go outside to do that every hour, that's not workable. One of the main issues that teachers deal with is trying to keep students' attention and their focus on their work. Can you just imagine the extreme level of distraction our students will feel as they worry about keeping their distance and keeping their mask on? This will not be a productive learning environment. My sister-in-law works at a major insurance company in Hartford. They stagger when the staff comes in and when they are in the office. They are distanced with spacing, plexiglass and mask wearing. These are adults and they're working under these strict guidelines. You know we won't be able to provide this letter of, this level of protocol for our students. Don't we all deserve the same protections? The NBA is playing in their metaphorical bubble right now, so they won't have contact with anyone else. They are tested constantly. J.J. Reddick, I heard speak this Sunday of the New Orleans Pelicans, was quoted to say, "If this virus has shown us anything, it's that if we don't treat it with the respect it deserves, it is only going to get worse, and it has gotten worse." Unless we get a complete buy-in on the protocols, this virus is going to be with us for a long time. It is imperative that Hartford exercises this respect to protect our students and staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Lauren Powers.
Good evening. I'm speaking tonight in regards to the health and safety of teachers and students. This letter is a collaboration between many Hartford teachers, and it should be noted, the words spoken here tonight are not those of a single individual. We have many concerns whose origins have been years in the making and which COVID-19 has uncovered. Our questions will address these issues. Number one, Hartford alleges it shapes 21st century learners and yet the transition to online learning was debilitating to schools at best. How does Hartford intend on financially supporting the technological infrastructure necessary to make online learning a success regardless of whether or not we are physically in schools? Number two, the Connecticut DPH has issued a guidance document for central and non-central ventilation systems to assist schools in their back-to-school preparations. This document outlines three steps that should be taken before school begins. Is Hartford financially prepared to adhere to these preparation guidelines? Can this be achieved in every school before teachers and staff are expected to return? Number three, transportation is a major concern for parents in schools. Has Hartford chartered more buses to safely transport children to school? 78 children to a bus, meaning three children to a seat is unacceptable. And this was standard practice for this past year. We could continue with a multitude of other questions of which we are sure you are more than familiar. Our point, however, is if the answer to the above three questions is not a simple yes, then we are not prepared to go back to school. Teachers and children are not expendable variables in Connecticut's back-to-school science experiment. The physical, emotional and mental health of staff and students is paramount to academics. However, we are not here to simply voice our concerns, but to offer reasonable solutions. We suggest a return to school in three phases. The first phase will be entirely remote to protect staff and students from the risk of COVID-19, as well as any complications that may arise during cold and flu season. Teachers and administrators will be able to prepare for the second phase. After Thanksgiving break, schools will move to a hybrid model. By then, a reasonable amount of time will have been allotted for intelligent and database hybrid plans to begin. In the event of inclement weather, schools will be able to move to virtual learning, a major benefit being no loss of instruction. By late March, and provided COVID cases in Connecticut remain low, schools will be prepared to progress to in-person instruction. No one understands the needs of children while they attend school better than the teachers and staff who serve them. We understand their needs because we communicate with their families, we continue our own professional development in social, emotional learning and restorative justice practices. We differentiate across the spectrum of abledness. We are honored to watch children grow, learn, overcome obstacles and surprise themselves with what they are able to achieve. We stop at nothing to get children on track. We are teachers and that is what we do. However, no level of education prepares us for watching a child or their families fall deathly ill to an unbridled virus when it is absolutely preventable. Rushing never saved the time that planning did. Anonymous words that ring true for our collective reality. Show teachers and families of Hartford that you value their lives above all else. Thank you.
Melissa Lee.
Sure, you can use a little downtime, but you also want to be at home.
Hi. Shall I hear it along, please?
Thank you.
At the line.
Hi. Good evening. I'm a speech linguist with Hartford Public Schools. And thank you for trying to make this work. I know it's a very difficult situation. I do have a few questions, though. Number one, aren't all people that enter Hartford Public Schools going to be expected to wear masks? Children included. I understand pre-K children, it would be very difficult to expect them to be masked. But all children, all staff should be masked. Also, temperature checks. Also, temperature checks. When we go into school, could we please be, just like at the airport, checked for temperature? We want everybody to be able to learn, but unfortunately, it seems at this point that health trumps education. Health. We all want to stay alive. We want everybody not to be affected by COVID. It's already affected our lives too drastically. And third, as a speech pathologist, what will my caseload be? I run from fifty to seventy-two kids per year, and I have not gotten any guidance on how that's going to work. I cannot work in a cohort. How's it going to work? I need to be able to figure out how I'm going to see students and help them. So please, consider that. We have also special ed teachers that would also be in the same situation. So again, I know this is challenging, difficult. Thank you so much for what you're doing, but health first. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Downs. Thank you, Tom Downs.
Good evening, board members. My name is Michael Downs, Seventy-four Rosemont Street in Hartford. I'm president of Hartford Federation of Substitute Teachers. Number one, I understand we're going to be opening around the eighth of September. I hope that we have hired fifty percent more custodians, a hundred percent more nurses. I hope that we have plans to take temperatures before anyone enters each building. Hope we've improved vastly the ventilation of each building. Hope we have plenty of PPE. And certainly, we can open some of our, or all of our closed buildings. Broadband. For the past ten years, we have failed to teach any of our students anything about vocational technical education. And so none of them are prepared for any of the work that's involved with putting in the broadband in two sections of Hartford, and eventually, the whole city of Hartford. So we'll be hiring people from Windsor and Bloomfield of West Hartford and Newington and Weathersfield and Glastonbury and South Windsor and East Hartford to do the work that Hartford students should be able to do. And professional development for substitute teachers. We need new changes in our health benefits. We need a retirement package. And we also need professional development for the changes that are taking place presently concerning this COVID and our protection. And I understand there's programs out there. So I hope that our development, our professional development will include all of those, all of those changes and education on all those, or development on all those, in all those areas. And also, finally, certification programs. We have several substitute teachers, especially some of the younger ones, that are interested in becoming certified teachers. And I'm the easiest person to, as a conduit, for relating all of these programs to the substitute teachers. They're a little upset when they find out about these programs about six or eight months after they're all over. So it'd be nice if someone would inform me. My telephone number is eight-six-zero-five-two-two-one-six-seven-zero. Or you can call the union at eight-six-zero-two-four-nine-seven-six-two-nine. Thank you.
Laura Morris.
Shall I hear the blue line? Hi, everyone. I'm your last person, I think. I'm just starting as a lower elementary teacher at Annie Fisher Montessori. And I started with Hartford in November as the long-term math sub for West Middle last year. I think of this time as going to be like a story that we're one day going to be able to tell. And the beginning, for me, would be like just how all of the rules that we used to organize ourselves in the, before COVID, all of a sudden just don't apply anymore. And now, we're faced with this situation where we have to all come up together with a new set of rules to organize ourselves by. And so we're called to adapt, which is something that humans have been doing forever. And it's why we've been able to evolve this level of complexity that we're living in now. We can send a man to the moon. We, you know, we're working on, you know, racial equity, but still, we've reached these levels of complexity which are amazing. And yet, in nature, we can see that, you know, you don't always have to adapt. Sometimes you can kind of coast for a while. And then, you can evolve these kind of, the complexity that you evolve can get really complex. Like, you know, monarch butterfly migration relied on things being kind of stable for a while. And so monarch butterflies today are having a hard time because they became so complex that they had a harder time adapting. Conversely, pigeons are everywhere. Coyotes are everywhere. They're generalists, and they're able to be flexible. And so, for Hartford Public Schools, I hope that we will be like pigeons, or coyotes, and just have that flexibility. And I think that, you know, I'm kind of still, I consider myself an outsider. Like, I just joined. And so, you know, this is like an outsider perspective. Still, would like to become an insider. And so, take it for what it's worth. But I don't think, like, looking at, looking at us, I'm worried about our ability to be flexible and to adapt. And I think the piece of it that I think would help us to be more adaptable and more flexible is if there were more trust. Trust between children and adults. You know, like, you know, when kids have to go to the bathroom, it's like this big thing because we don't trust them to go to the bathroom. And, but then, it's also adults and adults, and among kids. So I guess that's just my ask for you tonight, is can you look at everything that you're doing as, does it build trust? And can you ask that question publicly and regularly to measure that? Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Lisa Lohman.
Thank you so much. The next conference that I attended is three-point-one for this year. I actually do not have a floor. I feel the time to submit an issue to the president and change the subject of the board. Anything else that I want to say? I want to take all the students who have come out and it was a good email to the president. And I would take a lot of priority and effort to sort out the people's concerns about it. And so I just want to be able to hold back to take the time to do that sort of thing.
Thank you. I'd just want to make sure that it's said in the comments. So so far, we would like to do the overview of where we are and where we're going to handle the cloud or session next year. I think we want to share additional details and also some data from our past surveys. But I want to do our present offer of return. I'm just interested for us, you know, in our state and company. I assume it was supposed to be very many of us. I had to push back, and we actually began moving. But I decided to return and move next week. And our officer of charge moved back due to the larger space. If you recall, it is a smaller space than our usual. And so, staff are assigned with social responsibility. And the staff have offices moved to the new basis. And so, we're hopeful that we will like it. So we're beginning to move to us and our office. I want to add our choice office and all of our teams will stay at nine sixteen until mid-October, when they're ready. Okay, if you have further, any other specific you have now, so we're happy. No time, thank you. All right. And this one, you have orders has asked us to do as well.
Now you know them, and it's also in bold caps for the public.
So it's always valuable to slide views to try and our part of work. And I'm very pleased that we made it out perfectly hard to monitor focus areas for us. And our whole student, I said, I mean, you are always certainly having to connect with the other in the social and professional. And these are our students. Slide three is an overview of who it is that serves from the eighteen thousand students and eight thousand of our, our connected schools. And then, some of the shared regard to this different groups and the ability that we have across our district. Slide four, this is a overview of the agenda and the topics that I would like to present today. Which began with just a quick overview of the driving principles that we use to design our return to work plan. Those requests require necessary qualifications. She uses three different plans and were guided by the principles and planning, knowing to have people who are really, really, my people of our students and our family and our teachers who would be knowing that that is a very difficult situation to be trying to make it all our stakeholders. To the other planning, planning was to design something that is local and that it also compares, meaning that it also tries to align to the work that we were trying to do before to the extent possible in terms of our improvement efforts. And that we also plan for change in system learning. And given that we are on the pandemic, we learned that there are many needs to us that exist in our community to the extent possible that we're able to remain agile to working this concept to the needs and to have shift between the learning models. Around the time, we really just want to make a gratitude. We did have four reviews that were established, and their work almost is coming. Just wanted to just quickly want to highlight all the staff and community partners, the union membership that assisted in the design of the models. So thank you. I know that there are many needs that took place during the blackout. Well, we want to slightly to check in on this staff survey and I know that we use some of this data yesterday. Very hard to do, you know, because to really all our with staff responses. You can see here that I still have five hundred and seventy-one staff members. This is from teachers and educators that have not started to the survey. We know that teachers are working, that is, they are in our community. If you look at your staff members, some of them are on their needs. If there are never really needs, or if they have other needs that they have that include childcare or any other, a lot of needs related to that and others. So that is what I think is learning. And if there's too much of a problem, I think that's possible. And that I want to slightly do a reading of all of her, you know, staff progress. And so, we know that there is a variety of schools today. Here there are, there are situations in schools in which the students have said that they have their identity recommendations. My other really good recommendations, and they're also tagged as I have a project to teach, the distance program. He definitely had the, to say, I want to show the practice that they have for teaching for the world. And so, there's a variety of practices that our classes and schools are organizing. And as we shift to our family study data, this is another that's a little different yesterday. Yesterday, we had about a thousand less responses. So our response rate has almost disappeared. And our schools and our school, we continue to work hard to get family responses. And so, we're proud of them for their outreach efforts. You can see, you know, to the, to the right there, the distribution. Initially, when we sent the survey, we had option B and option C that are online learning models. Nonetheless, if you follow to slide, well, slide twelve, which is a little gap here, we still have forty, thirty-two hundred families and students have not responded. And so, while it is an improvement of about a thousand students, we're still continuing to do outreach. Slide thirteen, if you look across the distribution there, the majority of our parents across all grade levels prefer a late-distance learning model. Still, as you can see, an average of forty-one percent who are requesting in-person instruction. Slide fourteen offers just a holistic distribution of our school responses. Slide fifteen gives us an overview of our subgroups and their learning preferences. And if we look at slide sixteen, we can see where each of our schools' learning preferences fall. So I wanted to live the updated family data, given that that is one piece of information that we are looking at in addition to the staff survey data and the COVID, the external health conditions and the metrics, along with the guidance that has come from our state and city health officials. Slide eighteen is a slide that we've consistently lifted and tried to explain, and that is our operational decision meter. Where we are now is in the yellow based on our positivity, local and then county-based positivity rate, which is in the moderate to control COVID levels. Depending on the external health conditions and the metrics, we seek to shift in terms of our learning models, and I'll explain those a few slides ahead. We can, slide twenty is just a quick overview of the learning options. Option A, we did have-- Option A, we did have three initially, now we have two, which is option A, which is in-person, and it allows for transitioning to hybrid depending on that operational decision meter. And then option B is the option that our families have, which is to start a school-based remote model. That means that students that opt for remote learning will be assigned to a teacher that is part of their school. On slide 21, it's just an entire overview of what option A looks like under each of the operational decision meter problems. And so where we would start, if the external health conditions remained as they are today, is in the yellow with pre-K nine, fully in-person, always with the option for families to opt out. And as you saw, the majority, like over fifty percent of our families across all grades have chosen to have a remote option. But for those that elect to be in school, pre-K nine, this is what it would look like. It would be in-person learning every single day. The change here from our conversation yesterday is the early release on Wednesdays. I believe that was a question that was lifted yesterday. And so we want to allow time for not only additional meeting, but also for collaborative, adult collaborative practice and learning. For our grades 10 through 12, which are in cohort, which are in two separate groups, as you see there, they would be in school two days a week. And then they would flip with the other group, with Wednesday being a distance learning day for all learners. And then you see in the orange column, the progression and how things would shift. If we did move to orange, then we would not have any student in school every single day, like they would move to a hybrid model. Slide 22 has an overview of what a sample schedule would be for students across grade levels. Just want to clarify that if students in option A didn't earn school every single day, they would follow their typical schedule, if you will, in terms of their, their blocks, their literacy blocks, their math blocks. Those are sample schedules, but I really want to just take an opportunity to highlight that students would follow consistency with the same schedule. For those students on slide 23 that are in-person, I highlighted here some of our health and safety protocols. We are, and while I can lift some of those here, I know that there was reference at a chair moment. I don't want to respond to public comment, but since there was a question, a comment that was made that relates to health and safety around the masks, I do know that there is conversation as recent as of today that potentially would, would change the mask recommendation and/or requirement for precares. There was conversation that potentially pre-K students would have to wear masks. We await additional guidance from the state. Additional conversations specifically for our youngest learners, pre-K, with regard to class size. And so there's been recent conversation. There's nothing final, but I just wanted to lift that those are fresh conversations that are happening in the spirit of how flexible we continue to be in developing our plans. With relation to option B, the online learning option. This is an option that allows for in-school, in-school-based online learning. As I referenced before, a teacher from the school will be assigned to that group of students that will learn remotely. It will entail mostly synchronous instruction from the teacher. And slide 25 gives an overview of what the potential schedule, the sample schedule for students that are learning remotely would be. Each specific content, students will be engaging in synchronous instruction with their, a very specific portion of minutes that are allocated so that there could be time focused on curriculum guidelines. We have gotten several questions as to what does this mean for precares, for our younger learners. And so while it is about a four and a quarter hour day scheduled for our younger learners, it would still require a full day of hours, of work hours for our staff. Preschool students will remain in their cohorts, in their classroom cohorts. We also want to make sure that we minimize the interaction with other cohorts throughout their school day. And so these are for students that are learning remotely. We want to make sure that our, our younger students remain in a cohort so that they continue to build their relationships. As it relates to our students that have additional needs, our work with regard to students with exceptionalities and special education, it will require that our PACE managers continue to work closely, not only with the families, but with our special education directors to ensure that we're meeting not only compliance, but that we're meeting the needs of students and their families. When we have made reference as to groups of students that might be allowed to come into school, we do want to prioritize our English learners, our special education students, and those students that are disengaged. And so an example of that would be if we are in, if we are in the orange, for example, and we know that we have students that have exceptionalities or needs that are best met in the school setting, to make those arrangements with families to have service provision at the school and that is something that the family would like to do and if it is not safe to do so. I did reference some data displays yesterday with regard to the positivity rate for the county and Hartford. I did look at the data today, the seven-day rolling average. It is at a point eight percent for the county and one point eight for the city specifically. And so still within the yellow, but we continue to monitor the data. Slide 31 as to some next steps. Our team continues to work with school leaders to make sure that the, the class rosters are balanced to the extent possible. I know that I had a conversation at Wish today with the principal. And, you know, she was looking at the range of students in her classrooms, ranging from four students to, like what did she say, fourteen students in a classroom. And so the work is ongoing. Now we have, we have less families now that we have to connect with. And so over the next few days, we will continue to finalize class rosters so that we can communicate with our families and ensure that those options that our families chose are the ones that they would commit to, to the extent possible for at least a marking period. We want to make sure that we strongly encourage our families to stay within their choice in the marking period to allow for continuity of curriculum and to allow our students and teachers and their peers to build relationships. Slide 32 is an overview, it does have, it does require updates, but it is an overview of the delayed start. If you recall, we were scheduled to open schools for students on the 31st. We have shifted to after Labor Day. And the schedule is a full schedule until the middle of September. And so during that week of Labor Day, students in small grade, students in specific grades are going to come back in so that we have all students at the same time in the school. And then just a reminder to our community that we do continue to have virtual town halls for our families, for our staff. And there's a committee conversation that I'll be having later on, on Thursday. And during that specific community conversation, it is different than our regular weekly town hall for families because we're not going to focus on actual examples of what a day in the life of a student would look like in, in person and then also in a virtual distance learning setting. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Thank you, Superintendent. Agenda item 3.3 is the committee of the whole report. And we'll be able to access the whole report. But just as a quick highlight, some of the agenda items that were discussed with the contracts that you can see that would push forward for the, on the business agenda and that we have done a full discussion about those ideas and they are now on a business agenda. We also had a committee of the whole meeting yesterday that heard the superintendent run for it. And I'm going to turn that over to our second vice chair.
Okay, Madam Chair. So yesterday, you and I, we basically go through the meeting. Came out of a need from leadership, although we've continued to do our work within our committees around the relation to school reopening. It was really critical for us to collectively, as a board, discuss the concerns that have been coming through to us. The email, and obviously the world, we're watching news. We wanted to be responsive to that and also have an opportunity to dialogue with our colleagues about this. All in all, we were able to review the return to learn plan with the superintendent, who was very amenable to our input around protocol, around staff and student safety, and also sort of like logistical plans, right? So we had a number of input around what would happen if someone were to test positive with the protocols for nurses. Some of those things are still being worked through and vetted. We are committed collectively as a board to continue to have those conversations with the superintendent through our respective committees. And also we will reconvene prior to the start of school for us to be able to discuss these concerns. We know that things are rapidly unfolding. News is constantly changing, being updated. Other districts are doing different things. You know, and we're just keeping an eye on the best practices as best we can of this unknown global pandemic that we're trying to monitor. So we have a commitment to continue to dialogue around this, to continue to vet it, and put the safety of our students and our families and our heart of a public school community first. That concludes my report.
Thank you so much. And I know our board secretary wanted to add some additional information.
Good evening. So as a result of our committee of the whole meeting, we still, as our first vice chair, Ms. Taylor, stated, we still, you know, have questions. We understand that this is something that is forever changing. And I don't know how appropriate it is or not. And I don't even know if this is something that we can do. But through Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion that we convene a special meeting on September 1st, which is two weeks from today, to receive a final reopening plan that has much more detail than what we've been provided and that this board actually is required to vote on that reopening plan.
So there is a motion on the floor that was presented, but I actually need to see the board read this. As it relates to the voting aspect, I can't see them. So prior to, we'll talk about that. Right, there is a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'm going to amend the motion. I would like to break it up and say that it's two different motions. One is that there would be a special meeting to review the return to learn plan, if I feel to rehearse. And then the second motion would be whether or not the board is required to vote on the plan itself.
Okay, is there a second? Of the amended motion on the floor? To convene a meeting on, to have a meeting convened by September 1st to discuss a reopening plan? And the additional motion is to have a vote on what said? So we'll have to have confirmation about the bill, but before we can even have a discussion, we have to have this up there. Okay, the motion has been moved and properly set up. Now we can move on for discussion. We also have been a board as it relates to voting aspect of it. So Bill, you can go ahead and ask your question. Excuse me, board member.
Sorry for making Madam Chair. I'm just not clear on the second aspect of that amended motion. So I understand the template for, excuse me, this is a template for us to do, to understand the open plan or we go live. The part that I'm confused about is the voting aspect. Is that something that we, what is it exactly we're voting on? And is that within, I guess, our powers to do? And so how does that coincide with what the governor and the commissioner has mandated all districts within our?
Ms. Oliver? The only reason why I'm calling is because you put the motion forward, but I would have.
So I don't have a response to those questions. But the reason I was asking if we could amend it, amend it so that it's two separate motions is to have this conversation exactly. I think in terms of having a meeting to review the actual return to learn plan in more depth, I feel very supportive of. The second piece of it, I also have some questions. All right, thank you. So clarity from our lawyer as it relates to actual vote. She's going to seek clarity on that aspect of the second portion of the motion that was on the floor, even has the second. As it relates to the vote, we can actually probably move to vote on the two parts of the motion that's on the floor. We will have to suspend this vote and then make a motion to actually add this to the agenda in order to vote on this item. Because we have that happily posted as this will be on the agenda. So is there amendment to the motion that's on the floor currently? So to repeat, sorry, we have to, we have to vote in order to add this particular vote to the agenda because this has not been properly posted. Okay, so we have to make a motion to add the ability to make a motion in order to have a special meeting in order to reconvene to hear the final opening plan for the issue. to hear the final opening plan for the issue. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. There has been a motion on the floor that was properly second to add this agenda items between this motion to the agenda in order for us to probably vote to have a special meeting on September 1st in order to hear the reopening plan from the superintendent. I just want to make sure we're properly moving on that. Okay, thank you. So now, is there a motion? Since now it's on the agenda, is there a motion to have a meeting on September 1st in order to discuss the reopening plan that we presented by the superintendent to us? Now, we did a motion to add it to the agenda. Maybe it was their second. The motion has been properly seconded. Well, there's a paper signed by our senior high. Hi, there are any names? Abstentions, very kind of a check passes. There is a second portion of the motion on the floor for the vote. However, we do need to get clarity because as a board member registered stated that the guidelines currently as it relates to board members making the vote on the plan is not normally under the privilege of the board. And so we will have to have additional clarification from our lawyer as it relates to actually voting on that portion. So with that, we will be able to convene during that meeting to know if we can actually vote on it or not. Is everybody okay with that? Are there any questions, comments, and Laura, if I need you, if there are any questions on ones as it relates to that portion of the item?
The one comment was saying, sorry, the board member is getting the answer to that question sooner rather than later. So we will go over it in a nutritious way.
Absolutely. Laura, do you know when you'll be able to get that information to us? Okay, thank you so much. She said she will give her best to get into us by, we wouldn't say anything, whatever. All right, thank you so much. Are there any other questions, thoughts, and concerns as it relates to the motions that have been passed? Thank you so much. Moving on off to the business agenda, 4.1. Thinking well for, or working with us on that. The recommended action is the motion that Hartford Board of Education approved the superintendent's recommendation to appoint the chairman of the appointed to the decision of the chief of staff. Is there a motion? Second. Motion has been properly moved against second. Superintendent.
Thank you. And I believe Christina is going to zoom in. Ms. Aponte, I know I have access to the resume. I will read it just a summary here. Ms. Aponte is an experienced strategic planning professional. She supports individuals and organizations pursue greatness and perform at their best. She is currently a senior director of strategic programs. In this role, she works across the leadership team and drives critical initiatives and is also responsible for the organization's management process and day-to-day leadership, planning and operational activities. She's been with the company for eight years. And during that time, she has served in various roles ranging from human resources finance and strategic planning. In 2016, she was nominated and selected for a leadership program at the company in which she worked across various business units, cultivating the broadest meaning of the healthcare insurance business and health business leaders identifying and solving critical business initiatives and challenges. Prior to that experience, she spent several years in various HR operations, nonprofit roles in our Hartford community. She has experienced improving processes and enhancing operations at every level of an organization. She earned a bachelor's degree. Can you hear me? Okay. She earned a bachelor's degree from the University of St. Joseph and remains deeply committed and tied to Hartford, which is a beginning that she kind of grew up in. And so I will leave it there in terms of the overview, but this is for our chief of staff position, which I know Christina did also send everyone a copy of that job description.
Thank you, Superintendent. Or are there any questions, comments, or concerns? We'll have her to talk about that as well. Ms. Oliver?
Hi. I would like to learn more about the move from insurance finance services as a sector to moving into education. And if you could speak about your decision to go for a position in education and supporting the superintendent. Thank you.
It's so, it's really difficult to hear anything. Can you hear me okay? I can hear you perfectly.
Okay. So speaking then about the decision to move out of IFS as a sector to education and supporting the superintendent in district.
Okay, again, it's really difficult to hear. So I believe the question may have been, why the move from the insurance slash financial sector into the academic sector? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. All right. So first and foremost, it's great to be with all of you this evening. And I'm so sorry I'm not there physically distant with you. But, you know, for me, this move is more about passion and the timing of doing the right thing than anything else. You know, I have had a tremendous career across the many organizations that I have worked with in the past. And I think this is a wonderful opportunity for me to get back to my roots and to the community that I was raised in. And the passion for community and for working with the Hartford Public Schools is not something that is new. This is a passion that is deeply rooted in the person that I am. I think I've demonstrated that through, you know, the experiences I've highlighted for everyone on my resume. But more than anything, it's just an opportunity for me to be a part of the transformation that needs to occur for Hartford Public Schools amidst everything that's happening with not only the pandemic, but just the shift in education and academics and what it's going to take to bring the schools to the next level.
Thank you. Are there any other questions, comments, or concerns?
Madam Chair. I have a question. I do have a concern. Being when I think of all the previous chief of staffs that had an education background, I have concerns that will affect the candidate that's for us that doesn't have. If you're, if you're, the people that are forwarding to you all, mostly all have that background. I mean, I have the superintendent that has an education background. And that is a concern of mine, let me ask. So I don't have a question, but that's just basically my concern.
Thank you, Sister Ruth. Maybe I can translate it to a question of how do you, or how do you deal with your background, not being in the education, on how would you support those who have an education background?
Yeah, absolutely. I think if anything, now is a wonderful time to really rise to the occasion and be able to bring to the table different skill sets. You know, I definitely understand that my background is not in education. If you speak to anyone who knows me and knows what my passions are, they will tell you that I am a quick study and that I've always been passionate about learning more about education as a field. But I do think that this is a great opportunity for me to bring to the table all of the experiences that I have had as a strategic planning, experienced strategic planning professional, someone who understands operations, but also understands how to run operations effectively. For me, one of the things that I feel is going to be very critical as part of the transition and as a parent myself of three children in middle school and one going into high school, what's really important for me is that everyone is talking to each other and that there is very solid and clear communications across all of the different departments and the staff and personnel and the educators, the administrators. And I do feel that that's the strength that I bring to the table is the ability to bring people together and to come up with solid operational plans. And I think now is at the time where those sorts of skills really rise above, you know, any other skill in an emergency situation. I think right now, that's, you know, something that I could certainly bring with me as part of my experiences and my curiosity. And I think the challenge for me in this role will be to better understand the education sector. And again, with a new lens coming in from the outside, I think that that would hopefully bring a little bit of fresh, a fresh set of eyes, if you will, to be a part of the administration.
Thank you. Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think you can get more refined and breaking the law through the process. As someone that's a very familiar with that, I do have a question as it relates to, I don't know what it is. It's not a concern. I don't think, I guess your lack of 3K or wild experiences is a concern of mine. If you talk about planning, as I look at my time here already forward and then kind of what's ahead of us. I think we have great planners, or what I think we need or we're adding together that are actually able to execute. So can you just talk about your experience in that? And again, I'm very familiar with the planning process and so forth. But as I said, I, to my various teams, a good idea is a good idea. About execution, it's just a good idea. So can you talk about how you envision kind of your expertise in fact and helping superintendent and her team really executing on some of these initiatives that we have that were pre-COVID and now clearly post-COVID, which is just a difference space that we're all operating in?
Yeah. I, it's so difficult to not be there in the room because I wish I would have been able to capture all of your sentiments there. But if I understood Christina correctly, here the question is around not so much the planning, but the execution of the plans. You know, as individual experiences in the corporate sector, I think that's where, you know, whether you're corporate, you know, or private or not, I think that's where a lot of the times grand plans fall short is in terms of holding individuals accountable. I think one of the things that's pretty unique that I bring to the table here is my individual team's performance. You know, I've been in 14 years of having the experience where not only does I tire part of this strategic planning aspect of any operation and strategy, but more than anything, I've been at the center of measuring that performance time and time again. And most importantly, I think I'm an individual who holds others accountable for the work at hand. And by way of implementing measurement processes as part of any plan or performance plan in general, I think you have the ability to do that. You know, if we were to take a step back and just think about all of the conversations, and again, it was a little hard to see to the public comments. I think there are a lot of concerns. And I think at the end of the day, you know, we have to work together. In this role, it would be the duty of the COS to partner with the superintendent along with everyone else in the cabinet and the board and others to make sure that the voice of everyone is accounted for. And if a plan were to be implemented, I think it would behoove us not to consistently and thoroughly make sure that we are measuring each step of the way. And that is one of the things that for me personally, whether it's in my personal life or professional life, I am very intentional about. Because I hear the concern loud and clear, and I believe that may have been filled to raise the question. But, you know, it really comes down to having a solid plan and then ensuring that we're holding one another accountable and not shying away from the challenges. And I think one of the key things here is not being afraid to say, look, this plan may not have worked. What's Plan B, Plan C, Plan D? And I think, again, having those types of conversations and that two-way unilateral relationship with any stakeholder is critical. But again, execution is key. And I think measuring that performance along the way in a very disciplined manner is important.
Thank you. Are there any other questions, concerns?
Madam Chair, I have a question. It's not for the candidate, it's for the superintendent. So how, if the superintendent is not able to perform her duties, does the chief of staff step into her role? What happens in that?
In a way.
If you say, I'm not a majority, no. So if you're not in her position, right? Don't be a superintendent. If you're not able to perform your duties, superintendent. Because we were clear when we went into the role of deputy superintendent. We have deputy superintendent, we would later have stepped into that role. So if you're not able to perform your duties, would the chief of staff step into your role?
So I see it in two different ways. One way is saying if I'm sick, if I'm sick there, usually one of the cabinet members that has the loan 93 certification is, you know, kind of has oversight of the district as the go-to person. If you're asking regarding to me being on or got something happens and I'm out for like a month, then actually that would be a function of the board to have a decision and a conversation as to that would be. Okay, I just wanted to make that clarification. Thank you.
I don't see that the chief of staff role has any kind of educational wanted to it. And I don't have a priority of operational effectiveness. And what are your intentions? And I think that this would be a great added asset to the team and have corporate and land and strategic experience. I also think that the chief of staff role is very close to the superintendent and having to give a great deal of discretion and trust to the superintendent. To have a chief of staff that she will lead fills the gaps on the team. So I favor this appointment. I think it's a very strong appointment and I support it.
Thank you so much. Are there any other questions, concerns? I just have one question, there are no others. I just see on your resume, there are, actually just around the whole resume that I'm looking, most positions you're in.
most positions you're in, I think the longest has been two years of transition. The city of Hartford, especially board, excuse me, the district as a whole has had eternal re-reading. We're being more understanding of positions for a long period of time. So I just would like to hear a little bit about your plan as you continue or forward in this position. You know, what is your strategy? What are your thoughts around long-term leading in this role?
Couldn't hear anything at all. Thank you. Um, thank you. Thank you for that question. I think something that I certainly wanted to address with the board this evening is the fact that, you know, this decision to transition has certainly been, you know, it's taken some work in the sense that I understand what's at stake here on many fronts. The decision to transition for me is a very exciting one. As I have had discussions with Leslie and the superintendent, Dr. Torres and others, I've made it very clear that this is certainly a very big part of who I am and a very deep passion. You know, I would be leaving a very great position with a wonderful organization. And there's a lot at stake there, you know, and a lot that I would leave behind and I understand that. You know, my commitment to this role is to truly grow in this role and hopefully evolve, right? Evolve as I gain a better understanding of the system as well as the needs, right? Because again, having someone coming from the outside really gives the cabinet an opportunity to perhaps get feedback and have conversations that, you know, if you've been in a role for a particular amount of time, you may not necessarily have that, those insights or that feedback from an outside of coming in with that fresh set of eyes. But, you know, for me, the commitment is long-term. Hartford is my community. You know, we relocated here for, for a position and, you know, I'm happy to get back to my community, my loved ones. But from a professional perspective, I really do hope to evolve. You know, operations is a very big skill set of mine and the strength that I bring to the table. The chief of staff and the strategic planning aspect of the role certainly appealed to me because that's what I do and that's what I do best. But over time, I would love to evolve into more of an operational performance management role, whether it be that, right, with Hartford Public Schools, which I'm hoping is the case, or another. But I really do hope to make this home for a number of years. Many individuals that know me know how much this means to me. And, you know, again, it's, I'm in it for the long haul and I can certainly attest to the fact that Hartford deserves the stability and the true end-to-end of what setting up a successful system looks like and then individuals being held accountable as part of the consisting cabinet, as well as superintendent to see through whatever strategic plans they have set out. That doesn't happen overnight. That doesn't happen in three years. Doesn't happen in five years. That takes time. That takes tenure and that takes commitment from solid leadership.
Thank you so much. Just as a reminder to the board members, the motion or is that the Hartford Board of Education approves the superintendent's recommendation to appoint Amanda Martinez to the position of principal of Burr Middle School. Is there a question? All of those in favor, signify by stating a aye. Aye. Are there any ayes? Are there any distinctions? You're hearing none, the ayes have it. Congratulations.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you. Thank you for this process. First and foremost, has been a very rigorous and intense process. I mentioned to Dr. Torres the other day that the best of the best organizations, I've not seen a very, such a thorough interview and process. So I first want to say hello to the team for putting candidates through something like that because I think it's a great opportunity to really see what the commitment is on both sides. So again, I just want to thank you for your time and for giving me this opportunity. I think there's a lot of great work ahead. There's a lot of challenging work ahead given the current environment. But I'm happy to be a part of the team and I'm very excited for what's to come.
Thank you so much. Congratulations. The executive business agenda is four point two. The recommended actions that the Hartford Board of Education approves the superintendent recommendation to appoint Amanda Martinez to the position of principal of Burr Middle School. Is there a question? One second. The motion, the motion has been properly submitted, superintendent.
Thank you. This is a recommendation for Burr Middle School. You have Burr is one of our last two middle schools that we are transitioning to this upcoming school year. As they stand the whole school that is going to be co-located with the Tantus system. This Amanda Martinez, as you see here, comes from Norwalk Public Schools, where she has spent time as a dean of students, a teacher on special assignment, which is another way of, she is core as a department of special education administrator. And you see there, her background as lower grade, first grade teacher and special education teacher across kinder through eighth grade. Some of the feedback that we received from the school governance council was an opportunity to have someone that has had experience in meeting the need of multiple learners. Students with a variety of needs, specifically her background and skill set in foundational early literacy training. She has had experience also in building capacity in other teachers as a team leader. And there's a level of skill set and experience that could be transferable given some of the initiatives, as you know, that we have implemented in the last couple of years to bring on to our work in our daddy teams. And most recently, she has served as a lead in Norwalk's community charter school development plan as well. I can turn it over to Chief of Schools Abila if she has the additional information to share with us.
Additionally, in administrating Norwalk Public Schools, she has been a chair for the primary culture team in her school, which led to lower suspension rates and higher student attendance. She developed new and innovative positive behavior systems and protocols that supported both teachers and students through initiatives such as the sort of practices and the AIS. Prior to that role, Martinez served as a special educator, some of the advice and information led teachers through data analysis and improvement plan, showing students our methods and shared all the discussion. She mobilized several families and communities and supported fellow educators in the areas of co-teaching and NTSSS. She currently resides in rural, with a husband and two-year-old daughter. She's very enthusiastic about fitness within a leadership or helping levels lifestyle. She finds herself as a life opener and encourages that mindset for us. Have students immense and hopes that all can become the instance of meaningful education and life practice as well.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns?
I have a comment. It's always a voice of encouragement. We, we, Burr, we just appointed a principal, was it a year ago? Right? So we're just looking for someone to be committed to our children, for them to know that the leader of their school, that role is not going to rock you nor. I, I'm not saying that, but you, I'm just hoping that, that you be that person to show that someone is there. They're just not going to give up on that and to make a positive culture there. And just have someone that they can look up to and trust as their leader, as well as the staff. But that's just my goal for the, for Burr's role.
Thank you again for coming to the process along the lines as my colleague. Just giving a turnover that that tradition has had in perhaps a million years. I guess one of our questions is, now where, where do you see yourself as a school in five years? What would be the metrics that you use as success? And how does that look like to you for those students? Given that you're coming to Norwalk, I'm assuming there's probably some similarities on that. I'm sure there's some differences and I hope that we thought about those differences and how do you attack them? So just did you get the, just getting an understanding of how do you success? And how do you kind of refer the school and your team and your leaderships to be in five years from now?
So I'm at a great change and I'm at a great challenge. And obviously, five years, I see myself as a principal of Burr because I'm committed to growth. I'm committed to seeing student success, to seeing my staff be successful and the families wanting to be part of that Burr community and making Burr the center of that community for our families, for our students and for their community members. I recognize some of the areas that are growth for Burr, but I also recognize the areas of strength. The community, the staff there, the students there. I love children. My passion is teaching and learning and I will bring that to Burr. With an additional of my go-getter personality, my acceptance of not failing, being vulnerable, being willing to take risks and embracing that with my staff and with my students and with my families as well in order for us to see the success and the growth in Burr.
As the principal and the leader of that school, have you thought about the first action, or the first task that you will undertake as the principal of the school?
Yes, definitely. My first action would be to build relationships, get to know my students, my staff, my families. Allow them to get to know me. I want to hear them. I want to listen to them. I want to know what they want. I want to know their goals. I want to know where they see Burr in five years. And I want to form communication systems that work for everybody. So that would definitely be my first step in coming in as the principal of Burr is to get to know my families, my staff and my students.
Asha. So thank you and appreciate the way you responded to that question. I want to ask you a question around family engagement. What I will ask is, thinking about Burr, our schools are special, but we will acknowledge there's certain schools that we need to offer some special light to. And there's a lot of great families in that community, some who are in need and some who don't always have their voices heard. Can you just expand a little bit more in terms of, you mentioned that relationship building, but with a focus on family engagement and how to work them into a hearted community?
Yeah. So one word that comes to mind as you ask that question is empathy. I stand by empathy. It's one of my driving factors in my life. In order to have empathy, you must build relationships. You must ask questions. You must get to know people. So building relationships with my families, reaching out to other community resources that already have their relationships with families and working on a collaborative, building even a collaborative, stronger relationship there. In this day and age, reaching out on social media and using technology to drive, those means, especially in the situation that we're in right now with COVID, to ensure that they're getting a voice even if we're not in person or together at a time. So opening the opportunities for parents to communicate in various modes, I think is very important.
Thank you.
Ms. Karen?
Thank you so much. Very impressive resume. And it looks as though you've been on sort of an upward career trajectory for the past maybe about three years. I do notice here that you had a number of responsibilities, like moving Norwalk Public Schools immediately this year to include co-chairing the reopening task force subcommittee for this coming academic year. Can you talk to us a little bit about your decision to transition away from Norwalk and how you have transitioned that very important work that you were leading there?
Sure. So the transition comes with a goal in mind to become a principal and be able to start with something fresh. I know the potential that Burr has, especially in the new, the new change that it's occurring. It's the first time that Burr will be a six-eight school and not a pre-K eight school. So I bring that and I embrace that change and that challenge that comes with that. I'm, I'm ready to lead a staff of my own and to create a community and a family within Burr with that staff, those students and my families.
And on the other side of transition, what do you mean, you know, like how you were able to sort of transition that all pending your departure?
Can you clarify that for me?
So it says that you were co-chairing the reopening sort of task force for Norwalk Public Schools, which is really critical work in this moment. So what were the sorts of things that, the conversation that you were having, which you were sort of transitioning your work in, how you were thinking about the transition of that work at this critical time?
Right, yeah. So I would definitely, I have presented my 3690 day plan with some of our my fellow colleagues and the committee members. And I would definitely utilize the strategies and the information that I've gathered during my time at Norwalk to make, to bring to heart for public schools and to encourage Burr School to utilize some of the strategies that I feel like have worked, especially in terms of scheduling for a reopening plan during the COVID pandemic. Strategies for, that support students with various needs such as intervention and planning and things like that. I plan to begin the year with strong professional development that get our staff and our students on the same page, developing a vision and a mission and being on the same page there. Did I answer your question?
Somewhat, but I, I think it's my turn. I'll think.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
I just actually have one. It's kind of loaded, not loaded and evaluated, but so, and you can correct me if I'm wrong. It looks like this will be your first time to have a principal position. And you will be a first-time principal on top of a shift in a school, COVID that none of us expected, and the anxiety of parents, teachers and our young people. And so the question, and there's no right or answer to this, but the question that I have is, that's a lot to juggle, right? And so I would really love to hear how are you going to look at balancing all of these factors that are being thrown at you at once, especially with you being a new potential principal within the school?
Thank you for that. And I just want, I'm excited about all of this. Change excites me, new opportunities excite me. And I plan, one of my strengths is definitely my ability to organize and create organizational systems and protocols. I've done that throughout my career and also on a personal, like I'm just a very organized person. So prioritizing when I become the principal of Burr to ask questions of my staff and my families, my students, and then work with them to prioritize what our next steps are going to be as a team. I'm looking forward to building those relationships. And I understand that there's going to be something that we may not have the answers to right now. But as long as we're putting our students first and putting them in the center of our work, I think that's where my role as the principal of Burr is going to become imperative around all of those different challenges and so, and other things that maybe we may be juggling.
Thank you so much. So I'm not seeing any other questions. I'm just.
So I'm not seeing any other questions, I'm just as a reminder, the National Florida Institute to approve the superintendent's recommendation to appoint Amanda Martinez to the position of principal of Burr Middle School. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye. Aye. Are there any names? Abstentions? Hearing none, the ayes have it. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for this opportunity and for putting your faith and need to become your next Burr principal. For I am beyond excited to join the Harvard School community and the family there. Um, I'm excited to get right to work, um, you can count on me to do so. Um, and please contact me with anything and I'll be there. Thank you so much for this opportunity and I'm looking forward to our partnership.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
I know, we can give our applause. Um, this is agenda four point three, the recommended action is that the Harvard Board of Education authorize a superintendent to execute a contract with Jeff Love, L O C, with the term delineated in the contract not to exceed 201,000, $825,000 ending June 20th, 2021. Is there a motion?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been moved and properly seconded, superintendent.
Yes, thank you. This is actually a compilation of supplies, P P D, that is needed. A projection for the remainder of this school year, well, the best that we can predict for this moment. Um, it is inclusive of 45,000 masks, guns, face shields, um, and other safety, uh, related equipment that is necessary um, for us to open schools. If you do have additional questions as to the many, many details, I think Mr. Shagary is also here available. Thank you. Are there any questions, Mr. Irvin?
Yeah, I do have a question. Um, so I'm not an expert on asking you what the price is in Burr. What's the usual price? It looks like face hairs are around $4.50 per mask. Is that a standard price for masks? I just don't know in terms of the final round.
So I think it's a little less, is it two to three dollars per mask?
Sir, there is on the tactile materials, so you'll see some various pricing based on the material. So some are clothed, but they're not, sublimated, so they don't deal well with sweat. So it's, it all depends on the material. So what we decided, given the volume of students and staff, we went with sort of higher quality things that'll last longer, also with the multiple washes. Some, we found, we tried them out, but after several washes, they start falling apart, which defeats the purpose. So, um, massive disqualify, we found, we had four or five different colors, this is the lowest of the ones we found.
45,000 masks, would they be available, they want, or is that something else?
Well, if you all approved this, I'd pay them to be available, they want, so we, uh...
And we do have supply already.
The one I get, like the waste of what I get, you guys are wearing, is what we've made for staff and students. The only variation is, we, uh, talking to Chief, uh, Yvette, Yvette, we're going to do some colors based on the school. So leave will be green instead of red. Harvard High will be blue. So it'll still stay Harvard High of schools, but again, a little, some a little bit of swaddling in the color choice.
Are there any other questions? Ms. Al.
How many masks, um, will be, um, available, like to a student? Is it going to be like one mask per student, two masks?
We've ordered two masks per student and two masks per staff. That's how we got to the 45,000. It's 44,700 something, but it'd be around the 45,000. And we had previously bought, uh, 25,000, we've given them already. The food service scopes have had since the spring, the studios have had since the spring, SSOs have had since the spring. So we feel we are good for our numbers, uh, in reference to supply. Comes down to sizing, so we had to buy small ones for kids, obviously, high school even above, got the adult sizes.
Thank you.
Um, I actually have a question, sorry, I missed some over. So, um, the two masks per student, per, um, staff. Are we, I just feel like we're not taking into consideration the laws, and I guess that's something that I worry about later on, but I just see our babies, especially our young ones.
So we also have 10,000 disposal masks, so if a kid happens to misplace one, come to school, we, each school's going to give a certain amount of disposal masks, so we shouldn't have a situation where no one will have a mask. And if we find we need to reorder more, this is just to sort of get us started and hopefully we can get us through, uh, hopefully when we'll have COVID can come this spring, but it's at least, since they're reusable and washable, we felt given a quality, we'll get some more back from the book, because what it worked out, uh, disposal mask, we got 50 or 6 cents per mask. So the reusable's paid for themselves very quickly. If you keep going through two or three disposal masks in a day, so it didn't make sense to keep doing that and just buy some and buy some. And if you got to replace it, still cheating and constantly replacing the disposal mask.
Thank you for that. I see no other questions. As a reminder, we are here to authorize a superintendent to execute a contract with Jeff Love, L O C, with the term delineated in the contract not to exceed 201,000, $825,000 ending June 30th, 2021. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
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 Are there any names? Abstentions? Seeing none, the ayes have it. Four point four, the recommended action is that the Harvard Board of Education authorize a superintendent to execute a contract with Frontline, with the term delineated in the contract not to exceed 62,501,000, ending June 30th, 2021. Is there a motion?
Second.
There's a second. The motion has been properly moved and seconded, superintendent.
Thank you. Uh, this is a renewal of management systems that we use for special education, individualized education, planning and Medicaid, uh, billing, and for also, uh, our evaluation system and application system in the Office of Talent Management. This, um, there was a conversation we had earlier on as to a number of platforms, um, in databases, and this, these are hard lab cohort. It is an effort to continue to allow us to streamline our recruiting and hiring processes. And it also helps us with, um, benchmarking with regard to our long-term strategic hiring goals. And then in terms of the I U P and the special education, it is the database that all of our staff actually use to, um, keep records of the individualized education plans, the updates, any assessments that are done for our students, and give the goals, any of the data collection that has to happen.
Now, the chair, may I make a clarifying point?
I'm sorry.
May I make a clarifying point?
Uh, sure.
Um, the superintendent is responding for this one portion I'd like to make. You're approving the 62.5, that is only for the recruitment hire, the OTM portion of it. The spend I U P part is a different invoice, you have to see that one yet, so you haven't approved that. So this is for that specific renewal for the OTM part, which is the applicant tracking and, um, I forget the name of it. But that's all for the OTM related part. The I U P direct and Medicaid, uh, direct is another invoice, they, we wish, they bill it in one invoice, but they do, they break it up separately.
Okay, I think we might have to have additional. The reason why I want to ask, I mean, yes, I hear you, because the contract that I'm seeing, and forgive the board members, but the contract that I'm seeing, um, it's for I O, for 70, I'm seeing something that says 72,687,000 versus we're approving for the six, six, well, we're looking to be approving the 62.501. So just some clarity in that difference, and I'm sorry, I heard you say it, but kind of obviously we're trying to clarify that.
I'm sorry.
No, it's not your fault, so I'm just, just some clarity on the difference between what the contract is saying and what we're looking to be approving.
You're approving 62.501, which is a renewal for the OTM portion of Frontline. We have various modules, uh, that we use. Uh, I know, I can't see if you're looking at, so the 72, I can't speak to that, I don't have it in front of me. But what we need to pull for is a 62.5, which is our recruitment hire, and we do to process our staff. So that is the contract that I'm familiar with.
So if there's a discrepancy, then I actually might be in my office, what I did was click on a different contract, so forgive me for that.
Okay, I'm not, 72 is not a number I'm familiar with.
I just want to make sure that the two numbers that we're looking at is the lower number that we're asking for.
I'm just trying to understand where you're looking at for the 72.
I see 72 as well, I'm just hoping to share.
72 that I'm seeing is actually on the P S S T, so might forgive me for that, I was looking at the wrong contract.
It's on the, on the third, yeah, it's on the front line.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're on front, so my apologies for that, 72 is on frontline. Um, are there any questions in regards to frontline? I'm sorry, I, I'm now completely confused. So the frontline that we see for the 62.501, you said this is the OTM portion, and there would be another invoice, but we just haven't seen it yet for another module.
Correct.
Okay, all right. So, um, there's a portion here of it that I thought, maybe I made this up, that made me think that we were doing I U P and Special Ed, but we're saying that's a different.
That's a different invoice, it's Frontline's a different invoice. We have about six different modules, like Bill, Sarah.
Okay, I got it, thank you. No, the motion doesn't have to be amended, because I, I used the right amount, I just pulled up a different contract. So I, the motion that we moved and seconded was for the 60, for the 62.501. Yeah, so that was the amount that I said the first time, so are there any other questions in regards to frontline?
Seeing none, and repeating the motion that was on the floor, is that the Harvard Board of Education authorize a superintendent to execute a contract with Frontline for the term delineated in the contract not to exceed 62,501,000, ending June 30th, 2021. All those in favor signify by stating aye. Aye. Are there any names? Abstentions? Hearing none, the ayes have it. Moving to four point five, which is the one I was looking at before, is the Harvard Board of Education authorize a superintendent to execute a contract with P S S T, with the term delineated in the contract not to exceed 72,687,000, ending June 30th, 2021. Is there a motion?
Some.
Second. The motion has been properly moved and seconded, superintendent.
This is another module, this one is connected to Venus, and it is, uh, absence management, recruiting and hiring, um, and also a warehouse for some historical data for us.
Are there any questions? And those who are viewing, um, viewing pleasure, we have actually asked a lot of questions in regards to these contracts. And so if you don't hear us asking questions, we have asked a lot of questions, we did our committee of the whole. Um, are there any additional questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Are there any names? Abstentions? Seeing none, the ayes have it. Four point six, which is the, uh, recommended action is the Harvard Board of Education authorize a superintendent to execute a contract with Dell V Mware for the term delineated in the contract not to exceed 54,825,000, ending June 30th, 2021. Is there a motion? Second. The motion has been moved and properly seconded, superintendent.
Yes, and do you recall the conversation with regard to the donation that, um, we had received as part of the, um, partnership for Medicaid? Um, earlier in the spring, um, for laptops for our high schoolers, I believe it was about 4,500 laptops. And then they learned that we needed to have, um, this, um, additional system to track them.
It's, the, the, by my experience, superintendent, the software came embedded in the 4900. What it created was, uh, some kids with the higher level protection, some kids without higher level protection. So the question equity, we said, let me go make sure everyone has the same level of protection. So the state had embedded in the 4900, and we understand from our equity, we said we want to make sure all the kids have the same level of security. So we go get additional licenses to make sure everyone has the same, uh, plan here.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none? All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Are there any names? Abstentions? Seeing none, the ayes have it. Moving on to four point seven.
Thank you.
Moving into four point seven, which is the first reading of the title, nine sexual harassment personnel. Um, there is no, no vote required at this time, but are there any questions in regards to this? Seeing none, the Harvard Board of Education accepts the first reading of policy 4118.32, Title IX, Sexual Harassment Personnel. Moving on to four point eight, which is the first reading of Title IX, Sexual Harassment for Students. Are there any questions or concerns in regards to the first reading?
Madam Chair, um, no specific questions on this, but I did want to thank Christina Santiago for sending us the model. I want to thank Christina Santiago for sending us the model policy on this, and hopefully we'll be able to vet it throughout the next policy meeting, and crosswalk it against what is being proposed now.
Absolutely. Any other comments or concerns? Seeing none, the Harvard Board of Education accepts the first reading of policy 5163.2, Title IX, Sexual Harassment for Students, and there's no vote required at this time. Moving over to the consent agenda, is there a motion to accept the agenda, uh, consent agenda as a whole?
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been properly moved and seconded to take the consent agenda as a whole, all those in favor. Are there any questions or concerns?
Ms. Al. So one of the items in the consent agenda regards the, um, signatory, authorized signatory. And we had, uh, some questions, and I was hoping it was going to be separate, to give the superintendent opportunity to provide more flavor to it. Um, I'm not opposed by taking it up as a, as all the consent agenda, but I, I would acknowledge, um, I was just hoping for some additional information that we had discussed.
Ms. Al, would you like to pull that out of the consent agenda and have that separate?
Um, I would have preferred to make part of the regular business agenda. Oh, I'm sorry. So I would have preferred for it to be part of the regular business agenda. It's a consent agenda now, but I just wanted to make my point, but I was hoping for more information that we can share here at the regular meeting.
You are able to make an amendment to motion, you would like to.
I also try to make this to a limited, right? Um, so, yeah, I would, I know this was moved in second. Um, I would refer to move, to make a motion to, a major motion on the floor, such that, um, item 5.4 is pulled down as a consent agenda and considered a component.
Is there a second on the motion to take the consent, consent agenda of that's minus 5.4, which is the resolution to approve of the authorized signatory of Harvard Public Schools? Is there a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any fees? And are there any abstentions? Hearing none, the ayes have it. Um, we have to go on the consent agenda first, or part of my floor is, I don't see that. No, you're not. By 5.4 first, or the consent agenda as a whole first, or does it matter? Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. So we're going to, um, discuss 5.4 first, which is the, um, the approval of the authorized signatory of Harvard Public Schools. And so, um, superintendent.
Thank you. Um, yes, so we are having, uh, a search for a chief financial officer as we have to move forward with the separation of this chief financial officer. as we have to move forward with the separation of this chief financial officer, the chief operation officer. And while we conduct that search, we will have acting chief financial officer, unknown to some of you, David Flay, our former chief financial officer. And in that role, there will be, I think, more additional signatory approvals. And so while there is, we had a conversation as to having Dave as an acting, this is a separate action that the board will need to take with regard to the signatory per regulations.
Thank you. So is there a motion on the floor for the approval of the authorized signatory for the Hartford Public Schools for David Flay? The motion has been moved, is there a second? Thank you, the motion has been properly moved and second, are there any questions? Ms. Albert?
So my question is, as of tomorrow, August 19th, who are all the signatories for Hartford Public Schools?
Myself, Mr. Zachary during the transition. And then Mr. David Flay when he does come on as acting.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments?
I think we will actually, I want to go, there's a point for clarification for Lori with regard to a change in the actual signatories. At what, there will come a time in which we'll need two signatories versus three, but I think that's more procedural question that we can address afterwards or offline.
So remaining to the question that's on the, the motion that's on the floor, could the approval of David Flay against the signatories for Hartford Public Schools? Are there any other questions or comments regarding that?
I didn't clearly hear what the superintendent said. So he will the acting.
It will be two signatures required. Your signature being one of them.
Correct, we have two signatories, but there will be a time in which there will be three while we have the transition period and Mr. Flay comes on.
Okay, thank you. So just to, so everyone can hear, because I know the last one is very difficult. Currently, there are two signatories, superintendent, even Mr. Zachary. If we approve this one, it would be three signatories. There will be a discussion later on as far as procedurally, how do we remove one of the signatories? Currently, the motion is for Mr. Flay taking that as a signatory, making it three signatories in addition. Are there any additional questions concerned with comments? Hearing none, hearing none, the motion on the floor is approval of David Flay to be as signatories for Hartford Public Schools. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Are there any names? Abstentions? Hearing none, the motion carries. Is there a, is there a motion to take the, actually, I haven't done that. The motion is that we approve the consent agenda as a whole with the exclusion of the 5.4 that was moving on separately. Is there a motion? Is there a second? The motion has been properly moved and second. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none? All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Are there any names? Abstentions? Hearing none, the ayes have it. Is there a motion for a jump? So. Is there a second? All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any names? Abstentions? Hearing none, the ayes have it. Meeting adjourned.